Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the open session of the Board of Trustees meeting. Sarah, will you please go over?
Roger?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Chevron?
Here.
Lee? Manny?
Here.
Mendoza?
Here.
Richelieu? Seled? Spector? Stalling?
Here.
Steinbrecker?
Here.
Steven?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. This is the opportunity for public comment. To address the board, anybody who would like to address the board should come forward, illuminate one of the microphones, introduce themselves, and let us know what your say.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Emilio Baranini. I'm the liaison to the State Board for the California Lawyers Association. I've had the pleasure of watching you all do the kind of exciting work that you do, and I've been very impressed. So I'm just here, first of all, to give greetings from our association. Heather Rosating, the President of CLA, gives her best regards and says that she wishes she could be here. I want to stress that we appreciate and support the importance of your mission of protecting the public and access to justice. So we want to do what we can to support and help you achieve those goals through creating points of partnership. So one area in which we can help create those points of partnership is to work on low-cost and no-cost CLE on issues that are of interest and fall directly within the purview of the State Bar. So, for example, you all should be very proud of the work that you've done with these new rules of professional conduct. And running with that work that you all have done, we've already had a three-part CLE series on those new rules of professional conduct, which were attended by hundreds of people within our membership and are available, of course, to the entire membership for purchase. But I did say for purchase. Part of our mission is no-cost CLE materials as well. And I'm happy to report that we are creating no-cost CLE materials with respect to these new rules of professional conduct. But there's far more that we can do together, along with local bar associations and ethnic bar associations and other groups, in creating points of partnership. So in thinking about points of partnership, I'm also happy to announce that next year, in June, we will have the Solo and Small Firm Summit. And this presents an opportunity for us to work closely with all of you to create value for both lawyers and for the public as well. And so one aspect of that, of course, is educating lawyers on their responsibilities under the rules of professional conduct. But another aspect of that is looking at new technologies and new forms of practice. And the Solo Small Firm Summit can be an environment in which that can take place. So that might be helpful to you all as you do your appendix eye review and as you move forward in exploring these new ways in which we can all practice law and making sure that the public still remains protected. Another avenue is the annual meeting. Unfortunately, this year, the annual meeting is scheduled for the same time as your board meeting. That is something that we need to work better on to avoid in the future. But I am happy to report that the annual meeting has already got a number of different groups linked up with it, and we plan to deepen that further in the future. This includes not just local bar associations, but also the California Judges Association and the California Supreme Court. And in thinking about what we can all do together, it's not just you and not just us, but it also is the local bar associations. You all have been continuing that dialogue, and we've been participating in that. And it's also the California Supreme Court. So the California Supreme Court has a civic education initiative of which they're very proud. And they asked us, the California Lawyers Association, to join and support that initiative, and we are doing so. And we're going to not only promote that initiative at the annual meeting, but we're thinking of additional ways in which we can help further and deepen that initiative. And so in that regard, any thoughts or ideas that you might all have would be very welcome in terms of that particular effort. So at the end of the day, if you have thoughts about how we can work together and use points of partnership to help you achieve your goals and to help make California a place in which the public is served by attorneys, I'm all ears, and the California Lawyers Association is all ears. So thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Claudia Masgari, and I'm an intern at the Center for Public Interest Law, also known as CPIL. For those of you who are unfamiliar with CPIL, we are a nonpartisan, nonprofit academic and advocacy institution centered at the University of San Diego School of Law. Since 1980, CPIL has examined and critiqued California's regulatory agencies, including the State Bar of California. We have attended the bar's meetings and followed its activities for 38 years. I'm here today to express CPIL's strong support for staff's recommendation that the Board of Trustees accept Professor William Henderson's excellent Legal Market Landscape Report and authorize the formation of a task force to consider regulatory reforms addressing not only the online delivery of legal services, but also access to justice in general. We absolutely agree with Professor Henderson's observation that the law should not be regulated to protect the 10% of consumers who can afford legal services while ignoring the 90% who lack the ability to pay. And we believe a task force capable of diving into these issues with a consumer-focused, not attorney-focused lens is critical. This work is cutting-edge and desperately needed, and we are confident that the State Bar of California is extremely well-positioned to lead the charge. We urge the board to consider the following recommendations with respect to the task force. The task force should conduct its meetings in public in compliance with the Bagby Clean Open Meeting Act, and all meetings should be webcast to encourage maximum public participation. Task force members should include consumers, an economist, a sociologist, and a law student, and be representative of California's geographically and ethnically diverse demographics. But most importantly, we believe the majority of its members must be non-lawyers. True reform must be client- and consumer-driven. We do not believe that can be achieved unless the task force is controlled by the intended beneficiaries of that reform. Once again, we sincerely applaud the board for commissioning the Legal Market Landscape Report, and we strongly encourage you to lead the nation in these much-needed reforms. We at CPIL stand ready to help and are happy to assist you in this endeavor. If anyone would like a copy of this testimony, I have prints to pass out.
Thank you. Do you want to answer?
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any public comment on the telephone? Steve Moad has liked it as quite his personal privilege to advise states and track those to your flag.
Can you hear me? Thank you, Michael. I've been honored to be a public trustee for the last several years, or two and a half years or so. I was a public trustee that was appointed by Governor Brown with the support and guidance of a very good friend who I've learned to friends, Malcolm Robinson and Mona Pascal. I'd like to say a very special thank you to Jim Fox, to Michael Calatuno, to Elizabeth Parker, our former executive director, and our current executive director, Lee Wilson, and most importantly, to my many colleagues and staff, and most importantly, to our many friends and supporters in the state legislature. I have learned a lot here. I've enjoyed a lot here. I have become a better person as a result of sitting in these rooms and listening and learning and sometimes having to bite my tongue a little bit and sometimes saying too much or too little. But it's been an excellent experience, and I promise to continue to be of service as you continue your commitment to enhancing public protection for all. And I respect so many of you individually and as a body, and I know that this work is not easy, and we have come such a long way from where we started, and I just want to say Godspeed to all, and I'm there with you in the future, and thank you for giving me this tremendous opportunity.
Thank you for your service. We appreciate your contribution. We overlooked in closed session to act on the closed session minutes. They were on closed session consent, which does not require a motion. Is there any objection to meaning the closed session minutes approved? In the absence of an objection, they are so approved. On the open session agenda, we have two sessions minutes, May 18 and June 15. These were also on consent. Is there any objection to approving them as consent? As they are deemed approved. Next up is my report. As you are accustomed to by now, I use these reports at our meetings to review some of the issues that we've been working on behind the scenes to keep the board members informed, to get you thinking about things that may show up as action items in the future, and to daylight some things that the bar is doing for the benefit of the broader public. So with that, off we go. You may be aware that the Office of Chief File Counsel sends an annual letter to all bench officers in the state reminding them that their clerks have duties to respond, report certain information to us, sanctions against lawyers and misconduct by lawyers and the like, but also asking the judges to assist us in performing our public protection mission by identifying attorney misconduct. We have been engaged in dialogue with the California Judges Association for each year to make that letter more meaningful, to make the judges feel that their contributions are more valued, and importantly, to give them appropriate feedback on the outcomes of cases that they bring to our attention. That dialogue is continuing. A letter did recently go out, and we appreciate the partnership that the bench officers bring to our work. The Malpractice Working Group is busily at work. It had its roots in last year's speed bill and is studying whether California should join Oregon and Ontario and South Dakota in mandating malpractice insurance coverage for attorneys. And their work continues, and their report will be coming to you safely after my departure from this side of the chair. I have not often used my title as Chair of this board in public communications other than on behalf of the bar, but I'm about to do it, and I want you to know that I'm about to do it and explain why I think it's appropriate for you to use my title in this way. A petition is being made to the Judicial Council to establish a rule of court that would prohibit the arrest of participants in our justice system on immigration grounds in courthouses or in the vicinity of courthouses. And the letter rests on some very interesting academic research that demonstrates the common law authority of courts to ensure the integrity of their processes in this way. Apparently, in the medieval England of Robin Hood and the Sheriff of Nottingham, courts needed to ensure the personal security of litigants from some distance from the courthouse in order to get people to come to court and allow the wheels of justice to turn. We are quite aware that this is an issue in California at this time. So I have agreed to sign that letter with many other leaders of our profession. My signature does use my title, Chair of this board, and has a footnote that makes clear that the title is provided for identification purposes only. The views are mine and are not the views of the bar. So I would encourage you to be similarly circumspect in using your title on this board, but there may be appropriate occasions. In my view, because this is a policy that our Chief Justice has articulated, the grounds for I felt comfortable doing it. We are working on a jobs analysis. It got mentioned a little bit yesterday. When you calibrate a professional exam, you need to demonstrate that you're testing the right things and you're testing it well. The right things are effectively the skills that new licensees need to provide professional services. When we calibrated the bar exam last year, we used the best available data we had as to what young lawyers do, and that was a somewhat dated national survey. And we are working on a fresher survey that reflects just California's experience. I think that's one of the important work that's underway to make sure that the bar exam is credible and a useful tool in providing enough lawyers to serve California while protecting us from folks who would disserve California. So that's underway, and it's important work. We are making good progress on the fingerprinting mandate. We have sent out waves of emails to lawyers telling them about the need to get fingerprinted and identifying how they can accomplish it. The fingerprinting reports are coming in at a fairly rapid clip. Many of the voluntary bar associations are having fingerprinting parties as a way to do their good work as well. We will get into the enforcement phase after the first of the year as we start sending reminders and then demands and then sanctions. And we may chase out a few folks who can't manage to keep their personal business affairs in shape, which suggests maybe they can't keep their clients' business affairs in shape either. Jim, would you want to comment?
I was just going to comment that maybe it's because I'm the oldest member of the board, the difficulty that I had was that my prints were rejected because my fingers are worn down. I had to go re-print it, and I don't know whether they've been accepted this time or not. Then I have to go to retinal scans.
The board is aware that we have three missions from the legislature, that we regulate the admission to and practice of the professional law for the protection of Californians, that we promote diversity in our profession, and that we promote access to legal services to Californians of all means. We have, in recent years, relied heavily on our sub-entities to pursue those second two agendas. We have relied on the counsel and access and fairness to pursue our diversity agenda, and we're grateful for the good work they have done. We've relied on the access to commission and some other bodies to pursue our access agendas, and we are grateful to them for their work. But we recognize these are our responsibilities as well, and under Leah's leadership, this board and her team are starting to engage these issues in an interesting way. On diversity, we think it's time to do some broad thinking about whether our diversity efforts to date have been effective. How do we measure it? What is it we're measuring? And what can we do to be more strategic about our use of limited resources to achieve that objective? It's starting with a series of conversations initially focused on the leaders of the affinity bars around the state representing minority lawyers. And so that work is just starting. It will come to your board for more discussion in the new year, and we'll see what new ideas come to bear. We are grateful to the California Lawyers Association, not only for their diligence attendance at our meetings, but also for their working cooperatively with us to envision a full-fledged voluntary association of lawyers advocating for lawyers and their clients, fulfilling what used to be the trade association responsibilities of the bar, and allowing us to focus on the three missions that I just mentioned. One of the important kinds of assistance they have given us is they have agreed to sponsor the awards that the bar formally gave at our annual meetings. And so the awards that we shelved for a year while we figured out what to do with them are coming off the shelf. They will be presented in Long Beach in September. I think the Chief Justice is going to present the Public Law Section Award again, as she has, and the pro bono awards, and the whole flight of awards are coming out of the ground, back into life, doing their good work of recognizing, rewarding, and encouraging pro bono and other efforts. So I just wanted to thank CLA, and as Emilio is here, we'll thank him personally for taking on those awards. I want to alert the trustees that you should keep the August 17 date for our next meeting on your calendar. At present, we anticipate only a telephonic meeting and only other programs committee. That could change. We don't think we need to make travel phones, but do keep that date available in case it's needed. An issue that has been discussed in this board throughout the entire six years of my tenure here is how to make best use of three floors of running Howard that are not at service. We were very pleased to recognize a report from Leah and her team that we have signed a lease and will have revenue-generating tenants on seven, eight?
Revenue-generating tenant in 11.
In 11, starting in January. We are very close to a deal for a tenant to take over all of floor one, which is numbered in a European way, meaning the first four above the ground. We are still at the table, and I'm not going to try to negotiate on webcast, but we're very hopeful that we will have that entire floor in revenue-generating hands shortly as well. That leaves us with floor three, and we are not doing much on floor three in the short run because we don't have the capital necessary to put that floor into leasable condition. So we know it's a resource and know it needs to be managed, but we also have to manage our resources. So as the board looks at your budget for next year, you should have in mind what it's going to cost to deliver that space to the market and when we can continue to do it. But I do want to applaud the progress that's been made. Steve and his team have been doing really good work, and it's worth recognizing. I spent a little bit of time on the rubber chicken circuit in my role as your Chair, and I had two events that I just wanted to mention. One is a fair amount of time is spent in the Capitol advocating for the bar on your behalf, mostly around the fee bill schedule. That is going well. We are out of the Assembly. We are out of the Senate Policy Committee. Next stop is the Senate Fiscal Committee, and we anticipate that the bill will hit the governor's desk before the legislature relieves town, and we have no reason to expect anything but a signature on the bill that meets the needs of this organization and of California. And that takes an awful lot of, takes time. Debbie's been very helpful. I'm grateful for her support. Joanna as well, and the professionals on our staff and on our consulting team. I got to attend an event on Wednesday that was quite unique. The city of Temecula in southwestern Rubicide County has a brilliant economic development director, and he has launched a bunch of summer academies for college students with ties to the Temecula Valley to promote doctors and lawyers and construction trades and other forms of human capital. And he's trying to develop his town by investing in the people of this town in the hope that they'll acquire skills and come back home and apply those skills. And so they have the City of Temecula Legal Scholars Academy every summer. It's a competitive program. You have to compete to get in, and they only select 40 students. And they bring them to a law school, they bring them to a law library, they take them to a courthouse, they let them talk to lawyers. And for some reason, I think it's a good idea to invite the chairman of this board to come talk at lunch on a day. And so I spent a couple of hours in Temecula on Wednesday answering, probing occasionally personal and interesting questions from 40 bright young minds about why they might want to be lawyers when they get out of school. It was great fun and great program. I brought the materials back, and I think there's an obvious opportunity for us to think about our pipeline programs and how this unique city's economic development effort might provide resources and a model for work that we do. We are close, you'll tell me how close, in recruiting a CFO to fill out this team. Why don't you tell us where we are in that?
We are very close, but I have nothing to announce just yet.
Okay, great. The case prioritization effort continues. We appreciate Steve Moad's continued availability to us for that very important work. We learned yesterday that as we started to look at productivity data on our teams, that we discovered that the case prioritizations were not catching the fractions of our caseload that we anticipated, that we were capturing many more Tier One cases than we really can handle with that level of attention. And so we will be refining the case prioritization standards, and it's a little bit like driving a car 90 miles around the track while redesigning the engine at the same time, but we have great confidence in Melanie and Steve and the OCTC team as that work continues. We have ongoing efforts involving many arms of the bar to pursue the protection of Californians from the unauthorized practice of law. Commonly, that is in the immigration context, although numerically, it's not a large part of our caseload. In terms of the number of people affected by it and the impact it has on our culture, it's a very big deal. And so I just want to applaud the work that OCTC is doing, that our communications team is doing, that our education efforts have been going to educate affected communities and to make sure people know what their rights are and what their options are and to take appropriate actions in those cases where necessary. You've seen the board blast on the press releases that have shown we've shut down a couple of practices and sent out letters to all of the clients who were affected by those unauthorized practices, and that important work continues. And that is all I have to report on, and I think I may have to turn to our executive director.
All right, so I'm going to be really brief, because as you know, I need to include a written executive director's report, but I do today want to make a few remarks. First, just by acknowledging that yesterday, I think, was a difficult day for us collectively as a leadership team of the bar. And to be cliche, change is hard, and I think our conversation yesterday reflected that. In my view, however, continuation of his status quo, which too often is the State Bar as a loose affiliation of silo groups of staff and committees, is absolutely untenable. A new dashboard has been added to your material for this meeting, as you've all seen it in your dashboard reports, and this is an at-a-glance view of our progress on the strategic plan. And this is a supplement to the more detailed overlook that you can get through your smart sheets. And I give this to you or highlight this now because it really ties to our discussion yesterday. The more volunteers that we have, and in fact, the more energetic, enthusiastic, and passionate that they are, the more problematic things become. If we continue to run with everyone's good ideas, we will do little well. We cannot continue to advance a mushroom cloud of even the most brilliant initiatives. We can only advance yours as codified and captured in the strategic plan that you adopt. Part of our ability to achieve the plan, to ensure that we are all heading in the same direction, working together on the goals that you have established as a group of both staff and volunteers, is to make sure that we all know what the State Bar is doing and why. And frankly, to be quite candid with you, I don't. Sometimes I hear things, reports, just as we had yesterday, maybe amazing initiatives, but I had no idea they were going on, and I don't think many of you did either. That's not sustainable for us as an organization. So I look forward to your deliberations that are going to be coming in September. I'm going to be asking you to make some really difficult decisions, but I want you to understand that it is in the spirit of trying to ensure that our organization can be successful that I will be bringing those recommendations forward. Also, to tee up for you, that once you make those decisions about our sub-entity structure in September, the challenges won't be done. As Michael sort of teed up for you, your next task is going to be defining some heretofore pretty amorphous concepts, pretty amorphous aspects of our mission. When we say that the State Bar has a goal to diversify the legal profession, we need to define what it is that that means. Does it mean that the attorney population of this state should match the demographics of the state population? Are we talking about race only? Are we talking about gender? Are we talking about sexual orientation? What is it that we need when we say we have a goal of diversity? Only when we do the hard work to define it can we hold ourselves and can the public hold us accountable for actually achieving anything in this regard. Similarly, what does it mean for us to have access to justice as part of our mission or increasing access? Are we talking about access to legal services? Or are we talking about services and supports for self-represented litigants? Those are two different things, both very important. The board is going to have to grapple with defining what it is we need when we say access is part of our mission. And something that I think became clear yesterday, our role as a regulator includes accrediting law schools. law schools. What's the purpose of accreditation? Is it to protect the public? Is it to ensure that there are meaningful and available resources for legal education available to folks that may not otherwise be able to access that education? And whose goals may include passing the bar, but not only include passing the bar. So we have to understand what it is we are trying to do as a regulator. Which brings me to the second part of my remarks, which is a little bit more helpful. We have Professor Bill Henderson here today. I see him there. Only met you before by Skype, so it's great to see you. He's here to present to all of you, I think that's up next, his landscape analysis that we commissioned for you on the legal marketplace, state of the legal marketplace. If you'll recall, when the board adopted provisions to the strategic plan earlier this year, you said that you needed more information in order to define this goal for the state of the plan, which is state bar would look at its regulatory environment as related to online delivery of legal services, legal tech. And so this landscape analysis is the additional information that I believe you need in order to move to that next level. For a board, and frankly, a staff, that has been mired in the weeds far too often, this initiative presents us with an incredible opportunity to lean way forward. We are not focusing on the past, we're not even necessarily focused on the present. We'll be talking about the future, the future of the provision of legal services and what our role is as a regulatory agency in ensuring that the public can responsibly benefit from the increasing investments in legal tech. So this initiative is exciting, and I think it's something that we can all embrace, and that our leadership as a state is something that we can be proud of. California, in undertaking this effort, has the potential to be the nationwide leader. We have many other states looking at what we're doing. I have gotten many requests for Professor Henderson's report, and my colleagues in other state bars look forward to seeing what we do in this regard. So I just wanted to make this few remarks about both what we did yesterday and what we have to look forward to in the future.
And I just want to take a moment to appreciate something that Leah has done that I think is worth dwelling on. She has taken our strategic plan and turned it into this powerful infographic. She's turned it into a smart sheet, which is a collaborative technology tool that allows all of the people that she's holding accountable for pieces of this plan to tell everybody else on the team where they are, how it's going, how it's moving. And she's taken our strategic plan from, let's check the box because the legislature said we have to have one, and let's write one that reads well in the legislature, which is what the first plan I encountered when I came here was, into a tool to discipline all of our forces of entropy that will distract us from getting anything done, to inspire our staff to show that we can, as an organization, accomplish important work if we focus on it, and to hold herself and her per-direct reports and to invite us to hold ourselves accountable for real accomplishment. This is a management contribution worthy of emphasis, recognition, and applause, and I wanted to take that moment to appreciate it. What's next is our consent calendar. We are not going to pull item 50-2 because you have a red line in front of you explaining the very small change required to it. Is there a desire to pull any item from the consent calendar before discussion? The item involving the CBE. Give me a number on that one.
I'm trying to find it, it has a 1113.
1113. We have a number of trustees, three I believe, who need the minutes to reflect an extension on 1113. You don't have to leave the room, you don't have to leave the table, I mean, no one in fact have to pull it from consent, we will just note that you're standing on that item. And that would be Mr. Stallings, Mr. Lee, and Mr. Fox. Is there any other item of discussion to be pulled from consent calendar? Okay, the matter will be deemed approved in that fashion, and now, who's going to introduce Professor Henderson?
Well, I'm really concerned about jumping ahead is that we have a number of people who anticipate it's going to start at noon, who'd be wanting to watch the webcast perhaps.
I thought it was scheduled to serve at 11:45. Is it noon? It's noon?
I believe so.
Okay, then maybe we should wait until noon.
Maybe we can take an item and then have them present.
Okay, let's talk about the scintillating topic of sponsored life insurance.
So we've got 10 minutes?
We're going to be working for our lunch start, I should warn you about Professor Henderson. So let's take a 10-minute break, get lunch, come back, and Professor Henderson will add to it. Welcome back. The board of trustees are in open session, and we're about to move forward with item 703 on our agenda, which is the State Bar's Study of Online Delivery of Legal Services, a discussion of a preliminary landscape analysis prepared for us by Professor Henderson. My dear Brian, who's going to introduce the item.
Randy Arm, Office of Professional Competence. I think it'll be assignment to assist the executive director's office in carrying out the Goal Four strategic plan with regard to Objective D. We already provided a well introduction for that topic. I get to introduce our consultant, who has been obtained to provide a landscape report on the current state of legal services market. Professor William Henderson is on the faculty at Indiana University, Mira School of Law. He focuses on empirical analysis of the legal profession and is a known expert on data analysis and innovation in the legal industry. He co-founded Lawyer Metrics, an applied research company that helps lawyers and law firms use data to make better operational strategic decisions, and he also founded Legal Evolution, an online publication with Chronicles, a successful innovation unit in the industry. He has written a very formative report, and he has prepared a PowerPoint presentation. And without further ado, I give you Professor Henderson.
Great, thank you very much. Trustees, I really welcome the opportunity. I'm humbled and honored for the opportunity to talk to this group of professionals. Insofar as I hold out hope, and I hold out a lot of hope for the legal profession's most distinguished days are ahead of us, we've got 250 years of great history in this country, but I think that we're going to make some work in the history in the future. And if I had to pull one place that I'd want to invest my time, it would be the California bar, because I feel like this has got the stature and the brain power and the track record to think through some very complex issues and kind of set a template that the rest of the country might be willing to follow. And so I just can't emphasize how humble I am to be here today to get an opportunity to talk with you. I prepared the landscape report, Leah's direction in her office was immensely helpful in helping me get it together, and so I assume that you have the opportunity to review it. So this is your time to ask any questions. I have prepared a summary, it's got a little bit of extra information and maybe I didn't touch on in the report, but you can interrupt me, okay? Please interrupt me insofar as we can make this time best used to you. So in the report, I'm leaning on some great social scientists at the American Bar Foundation, just because of the thing, thing, that's got a loose affiliation with the American Bar Association. And a study was done there, drawn on the Chicago bar in 1975. And the big takeaway from the Chicago lawyers' one study was that the legal profession is divided into two segments, two hemispheres. Half of the lawyers serve individuals, half of the lawyers serve organizational clients. And at the time, there was not very much overlap at all. If you could say who your clients were, they pretty much knew what your home zip code might be, what your bar association should belong to, your background in terms of your religious or ethnic background. And these two bars were dramatically segregated in 1975, and the client loads did not have very much in common. They replicated the study in 1995, and the hemisphere no longer attached because the organizational client had grown like great gangbusters. We saw some evidence that the profession was becoming more diversified, but it was driven by demand. In other words, we just didn't have enough bodies of kind of type-two white Protestant men to go around to fill all the positions of the organizational bar, and so that you had economic pressure to diversify the bar on that front. But also, the lawyer-serving individuals, their economics started to deteriorate. They were making less money, they were more likely to work two jobs. And so actually, the landmark study that was done based upon sample in 1995, so it's been a while since we've had fresh data on that one. But I use that framework because I think that it really holds true, that the lawyer-serving people are really operating in a different sphere than the lawyer-serving organizational clients, although the bar regulates both. It's, we're fortunate that the U.S. Census Bureau provides data that actually tracks what they call class of customer. And here is my current estimate, and this would be from 2017. It's based upon data from 2012, but I increase it based upon GDP, and my estimates would be there'd be a $70 billion people law market and a $220 billion organizational law market. You can see there's about 6 million clients in the blue, and there's about 325 million in the gray. And so if you think about this, there's a lot more money to be spent by businesses on legal services than there are individuals. And when we think about generalizing from law experiences, chances are pretty good that we either live in the blue or we live in the gray. And this is what makes it very difficult to regulate, because we oftentimes have frames that are based upon our personal experience, and not too many people cross over those two aspects of the bar. So I'm going to use that framework as I go through, and I talk about the people law, which is the gray area, and the organizational client sector, which is the blue area. And you include government and institutional side? Yeah, insofar as, that's a really good question. Can I call you Michael?
You can, it's easier to say than I have to.
I was a little intimidated by the last name. What it doesn't, it covers insofar as the government hires legal services from a legal service organization, it's captured in that blue, would definitely be in that blue. It does not capture the many lawyers that work for It does not capture the many lawyers that work for state, local, and federal government. I mean, that's, insofar as your client, you're employed by a non-legal services client, like if I worked for Cisco, I would not be in that data. And so that's a limitation of the data weight. These are for law firms or individuals that are in the business of selling legal services, and this looks at their clients.
So it does include in-house counsel?
It does not include in-house counsel, which is telling you that the legal services market is much bigger, because so much of, the government hires a lot of lawyers, it's not in that data, insofar as their staff lawyers. If they hired a law firm, then the law firm, they would chill in their law firm, as the state of California is a client of, you know, a big firm or something like that.
Or small firms.
Or small firms, yeah, yeah, yeah. So one bit of data that I think is crucially important to point to is the U.S. Census Bureau conducts something called the Economic Census every five years, and it breaks down all the business in the United States, including legal services. And this breaks it down by class of customer. And you can see that the orange segment was 29% of the legal services market in 2007, but it went down to 24%. That was an absolute drop of $7 billion. And such a big number that it makes me think the data can't be right, but I think the data is right, but it's telling us something very, very important about what's going in the people law sphere. And that's a really big drop, and $7 billion is a big diminution. This is probably before even the rise of LegalZoom getting a lot of traction. I think that this is more about the deterioration of the overall practice that is opposed to displacement by technology, although we can't disentangle those drivers. But that's a huge diminution. So when I see a drop that big, I look for some other data points to tell me what's going on here, as opposed to just purely relying upon the government data. And there's a report that's put out by a company called Clio. Clio is a Canadian-based company, it's a software company that provides cloud-based practice management software. And they're overwhelmingly pointed toward the people law sector. So if I'm a two- or three-person operation and I can't afford sophisticated software, I would hire Clio. And Clio's got the great online software, it's very, its price point is very low. And because it's cloud-based, they're able to aggregate all this data. And if you look at this report, which you can get online, you can see that overwhelmingly, this is consumer law, this is personal injury, this is wills, trusts in the states, this is people law stuff overwhelmingly. And so the sample is 10 million hours billed, over $2.5 billion billables, and over a million matters. And so this is a really big, it's their universe of data. And we start out, well, the typical lawyer in the sample is billed on $206 an hour, right? This is going to be really good news. Now, that's a decent sum of money. The problem, though, is that the typical lawyer is only billing 2.3 hours a day, they're only actually billing, they're working 2.3 hours a day on a client matter, they're able to bill 2.9 of it, they collect 1.6 of it, and when you kind of total it out, it's $422 for their efforts. And you extrapolate that, that's $108,000 a year, and that has to pay for their retirement, that has to pay for their practice insurance, that has to pay for their overhead. And you can see that this is a picture, and they're spending almost as much time looking for work as they are doing legal work. And this is a huge sample, and I found this to be very sobering data. And you know, Clio's trying to help this group of folks with this data, develop their practice areas. These are the, this is the segment of the bar that at least has their, is capable of having practice management software. Other people are doing it on Excel, they're doing it on Spire, or notebooks. This is a more sophisticated group of terms of people law segment of the bar. So, and this is something I want to emphasize, is the bar can't by itself solve access to justice problems, you don't regulate the court system, the court system is going through its own difficulties. And the National Conference of State Courts commissioned a report a few years ago, where they looked at 10 major metropolitan areas, and they took the universe of data of matters that were disposed of over that period. It was a huge universe of data for those 10 jurisdictions, and included it was Santa Clara County and California. And the data that came back was pretty sobering. Of the 225,000 matters that ended in a non-zero judgment, and this was out of roughly almost 950,000, the median judgment was $2,400, the average judgment was $5,400, which is telling you that a few judgments are kind of driving the overall average. There's a few kind of big ones that get in the newspaper, but overwhelmingly, these are such small judgments, it's almost difficult to imagine a lawyer engaging, being engaged on the matter. And if you're going to do such a high-volume, low-stage thing, you're going to really need a lot of technology to make it worthwhile. And 75% of the cases had at least once self-represented party. And the conclusion, this is a, this is the, a group of researchers that are pulled together, were founded by Warren Berger in 1970. And this is not a fringe group, this is a group of state court administrators. They say, quote, "The picture of civil landscape that emerges from the landscape data that confirms the longstanding criticism that the civil justice system takes too long and costs too much." And I think that we're beginning to see very clearly that the cost of engaging the judicial adversary process when paired up with the states, there's just a mismatch. And so you get these distortions that come about, because hiring lawyers for both sides just doesn't match up with the underlying states. So in the report that I did, I spent a little bit of time talking about online dispute resolution up in Canada and British Columbia, there's a system that looks pretty promising. PWC actually built the IT that underlies it, although the British Columbia retains rights to it. And lawyers are not on either side of the dispute, they have a case manager typically legally trained that's sitting on those disputes. And all jurisdictions, all civil matters underneath $5,000 have to go through this system. So you could be at home, and you could file a complaint at home, and it takes you through a structured mediation process that captures some of the very best ideas in terms of mediation. Included, you can click, check a box to see if you want an apology, and it turns out that that's a useful tool. And so Tyler Technologies is a company in the United States that provides IT services to governments, and they bought a company called Modria, and now this very system is being up and running in Austin, Texas, you know, tech capital. Two counties there have decided to give this a whirl. And this is something where the judiciary needs to do it, but to a certain extent, we have access to justice problems, and it's really, the frontline of this is the courts, the legal profession ends up taking responsibility for it. But this is, this is both the bar and the courts need to solve this problem. This is the front lines of access to justice that exists right here. I wanted to take a picture of, you know, Google understands my preferences pretty well here, because I always get banned for ads for LegalZoom. And I know a little bit about this sector, and more than a little bit about the sector. And I want to say that there's very few legal tech companies that have really turned into substantial operating companies, and one of them is LegalZoom. They're based in Los Angeles, and they've been around, or they seem new, but they're actually been around for almost 20 years now. And a couple things I want to point out from them. One of them is that their climate is a value chain. You think that they were just providing a form to document, but look, we're talking about bankruptcies, we're talking about patents, we're starting, talking about starting businesses. And their real innovation, or their real, I think that they have the most recognized brand in all of legal services, and they've spent a lot of money to do it. They almost went public, but they pulled their IPO, and they said it took $200 million in private equity funding, I think from a European concern, and that's how they capitalized it. And they've become very expert in marketing. And one of the things, when you have that strong a brand here, and they're clearly targeting people that are beginning businesses, and those businesses are going to grow, and eventually they'll be a great company within that portfolio, you know, and some saplings that eventually hit the tree line, and they know that they're going to have allegiance to those folks. And, you know, their plan is somehow probably to monetize that brand allegiance. And I just wanted to tie to, this is something that was not covered in the report, but I think it's worthwhile connecting to it. LegalZoom right now, insofar as they're connected to the practicing bar, is running through insurance programs. It's basically, they operate through, in most jurisdictions, a 7.3 insurance plan. And the best example, analog to that, is Joel Hyatt had a Hyatt, you know, insurance plan. Now, I wanted to emphasize something that's not well-known. Joel Hyatt, in the 1970s, was an associate at a Wall Street firm, and he quit because he wanted to get off the ground, a thing called the, what was sometimes popularly called the storefront legal revolution. And he thought that legal services should be made available to the public, and he was going to leverage technology to do it, and he happened to have the financial resources to make that available, and he used television to advertise after base to build up a very popular, powerful brand. High legal services business failed primarily because the secretaries and the paralegals that understood the technology that could build the tax-distributed forms were much more, much more important than the lawyers. The lawyers were there to basically sell the legal services, because you needed a law license to talk to the client to fill it in here. And the lawyers found the work so boring, and it couldn't be remunerated too well, that it failed, and it basically had to become Hyatt Legal Services, or Hyatt, it had to change into an insurance company instead. And so that was 30 years ago that we actually had this, this is our second hunt at it. And Jacoby Myers was in that group as well, and they became known for basically aggregating mass tort claims. I mean, that eventually is how that ended. And so one thing I would say about how LegalZoom operates these firms that it shifts their leads to, is it carefully guards them and monitors them with net promote scores. So if a LegalZoom-generated lead gets handed off to a law firm that's part of this legal insurance plan, it's carefully guarded to make sure that those people have a wonderful experience, because LegalZoom's very expensive brands at stake. And so I would urge you, insofar as to do more due diligence, to see that actually, LegalZoom, I think, is doing a pretty responsible job here. They're not high-paying legal jobs, these firms would suspect, but they're giving meaningful work, they're moving up the value chain, and they're really carefully guarding the customer experience within that promotion.
Professor Henderson, can you explain, when you say this is done under 7.3 as insurance, can you just describe that a little bit?
So, under the solicitation rules, you can't, you can't talk to somebody who hasn't actively lead. You can talk to, you can present that as a, basically, you're going to need legal services in the future, here's an insurance plan that when you need it, you will have access, you'll have paid access to a portfolio of specialists. And so, and so I don't know 7.3 like the back of my head, but I think it's 7.3D, and the model rules talks about, it's okay to approach somebody with the idea of a state-approved insurance plan that provides access to legal services in the event that you need them in the future. And so LegalZoom has this wonderful, at least by their lights, this ability to aggregate leads. And so when people need them, and they're, LegalZoom can channel them to a law firm that basically is part of this insurance plan. So I don't know, I don't, I can't speak on behalf of LegalZoom, I've never done any work for them, all I've done is researched this. And so I think it's an interesting, something to keep our eye on here, and I think it is connected to the storefront revolution of 35 years, I think that this one direction it works.
So what I heard you say is that this is not illegal tapping because of the insurance plan.
Yeah, yeah, they've gone to great lengths to run this insurance company. Now, in the UK, LegalZoom actually owns a law firm. I do think that there's, this is suggesting, as they move up the value chain, and they're, and they seem to be generating satisfied customers that are loved, their brand here. It's worth looking into this one. I think that they're doing the marketing, the IT, that lawyers lack the sophistication capital to do. And I think that there is, there is room to imagine this kind of IT and this kind of marketing solving a big pain point for lawyers that are working for the people bar, to get these two groups to collaborate with one another, because at stake, this only works as if the consumers are getting great experience. And so I think that it's worthwhile to explore the ability for these kind of professionals to collaborate with the practicing bar here to solve the IT and marketing issues, the sourcing issues.
You say they carefully guard the customer experience. What I hear is they are doing the bar's role, and maturing the quality of legal services and protecting clients from bad experience, so that we, the economy, marvelous capitalist machine we've got, has created an effective substitute for a part of our role. Maybe I'm overstating it.
Well, I, I, I think your voice is a perspective I haven't heard before, but I can see how it can be characterized that way. And I just, I appreciate the open-mindedness to think about this. And so I haven't done due diligence on this in terms of going out to the field and looked at it, but I think it's worthwhile. And I just, this is one of the few companies that's turned into a successful operating company in the people space. One last thing I'll mention here is that Y Combinator, which is a big tech accelerator, Silicon Valley outfit that's known for, they, they'll fund legal, but they'll only fund legal on the consumer side disproportionately. And I think that part of it has to do with the fact that the decision in a law firm partnership, we need 10 or 15 people to agree to do something, the consumer knows they have a need, and they can instantly make a buy decision. And I think that this is a situation where I think that the public is hungry for something better, and LegalZoom's the best, is right now, I think that has done the best at tapping into that in a responsive way, commercially successful way, I should say. So, I'm falling behind here, so it's okay, can I move on? So, I want to talk about organizational clients, this is the blue segment that I was talking about before. And I consider this to be an economic problem, it's a different economic problem, it's a serious economic problem. If you're running a big, complex organization, you want to comply with the laws, this is a very, this is a very significant problem. And so to kind of simplify it, we know that the economy is growing, we know that corporations are getting bigger, and they're getting more multi-natural scope. So for every unit of economic growth, we've got some corresponding increase in economic complexity. My thesis is that, is that it's not a one-to-one thing, that we have more work to do, so we have more legal work to do. It's not a one-to-one ratio. I think that actually, there's a bend in this line here, and the way we cope with it in the early days was to specialize, and this led to the rise of large firms, where you had practice groups that dealt with the complexity through specialization. We had a period of time over the last 30 years, I lived through it, where the specialization, the expertise you needed resided in large firms that had a lot of deal flow, and they had done things before, and so their specialized team could be, could be pointed at your work, and you could stay in compliance with law. But now, there's so much complexity that you actually have corporate clients that are the wealthiest clients there are, saying, hey, we need, we need some sort of a substitute we can't pay the way we've always paid before, we can't, it needs to be provisioned in a different way. And they're not only looking for cost substitutes, but they're looking for quality substitutes. And this is the point I've made regarding, we oftentimes confuse the cost pressure with the productivity problem. If we could figure out a way to get more legal services per hour of effort, that would solve the cost problem. And I think fundamentally, we've got a productivity problem, that technology and process and data are going to solve it. So to show you how this has played out over the last 20 years, if I'm running a big corporation and I have complex legal services, and I, and I'm under cost pressure because of this lag in productivity, step one, the simplest thing I can do is insource the associate that's working in the law firm and make them part of my payroll, and I'm basically cutting out the profits that would fall, that would flow to the partner. And so you can see that over the last, over the last 20 years, this is the portion of the bar that has really exploded. There was 35,000 in-house lawyers in 1997, according to the Bureau Labor Statistics, now they're up to 105,000. That's as many lawyers as work in an analog 200 firm domestically. So we've insourced it, we basically made, we've gone to work for our clients as a single employee. You can see that actually, law firms have grown since the financial crisis at a rate slower than government lawyers. So the government is becoming a bigger employer, or is growing faster in terms of employing lawyers than private practice. So because so much of the work that I do requires me to generalize, and I realized my generalizations weren't getting much traction, I thought about who the clients were really talking about. And I came up with this typology, and I think the model rules capture kind of type one, type two, type three, and even type four clients, but I'm grappling with a type six client. And a few years ago, I was out at SFO at an industry event put up in the Silicon Valley Business Journal, and I'm sitting around in And I'm sitting around and looking at who's paying for all the tables. And I thought I'd see a bunch of law firms paying for the tables. It was Cisco. It was HP. It was NetApp. They were buying them. And I lean next to the editor of the Silicon Valley Business Journal, we have to go to Law School, but he's a journalist, said, how's the trade journalism business? He says, do you think I'm in the trade journalism business? I'm in the events business. And he was pointing out, and I, all of a sudden I realized, oh my God, there are firms embedded inside of large corporations now and I had just been missing that. I did not appreciate the fact that the bar, and all, in Asia, that I had 900 attorneys. And so, and so, and you have legal ops professionals that are, that aren't necessarily licensed lawyers that are trying to optimize the more for less. They've got procurement professionals. And I think that, that we never really anticipated having these kinds of sophisticated, now those type six clients control basically one out of every eight dollars that are spent on legal services in the United States outside counsel. So, this is a really big issue. And also, California is the, is the home base, the headquarters for the Corporate Legal Operations Consortium. This is NetApp, Cisco, Facebook, Oracle, the early ops people come together and form this nonprofit trade association. And the first year was at the St. Francis in San Francisco in 2015, or 2016, there was 500 people there. I was there. It's now 2,300. We can only hold this in Las Vegas. That's how big this association has gotten. And a lot of the legal tech vendors are going there. And so, this is, this is an explosive growth that's taking place. And I would say, one out of every two members of the clock organization has got an MBA as opposed to a law degree. So, these are, this is a multidisciplinary field. This is a picture that comes from Alan Bryant, who's the head of legal operations and outside counsel management at Walmart. And he said, in the past, we divided up the work, most of the work went to law firms. And we did some of the, the kind of the trafficking, the kind of the, the kind of managing traffic in the in-house. And now, we brought in alternative legal providers to do this lower level work. And we're moving up the value chain as in-house lawyers. And, and the work going outside counsel is shrinking. But he sees the future going to highly specialized work, going to law firms. And I would say, the good news for law firms is something to kind of bear in mind here, this is highly specialized price insensitive work. And that's not going away. We're going to need bespoke lawyers to think through issues of first impression. And we're going to need a lot of them to do it because the world's getting more complicated. So, that red bar is shrinking, but the work, the work that's staying there is not commodity work by long shot. And then, the, the in-house counsel doing something, and then these alternative legal service providers. And that's primarily a process-driven, you know, practice of law here where you're taking technology and process to make it work. And Alan Bryant's a very sophisticated guy. And when I saw that for the first time, I said, well, this is, this is from the customer. This is an academic. This is, this is a guy who sits on hundreds of millions of dollars of legal spending. This is how he sees the future. And he does hire alternative legal service providers to do a lot of his work. So, I'm going to talk about lagging legal productivity. I want to make sure I take a breath here. Do you want to ask any questions or if I've confused you?
I just want to contextualize that I work for public agencies and a private law firm. And I'm increasingly dealing with procurement staff.
Yeah, yeah.
And these procurement staff are dealing with software-driven things and have a box that you've got to check.
Yeah.
And if that box doesn't make any sense to me or them, they still have to find a way to check it.
Yeah.
So, I have a client that I won't name that is in Cisco, who might produce in my financials to demonstrate that I have the wherewithal to complete this construction project. And I'm not actively doing my financials because I'm fronting all of this. I do the work, I send them the bill, I get paid out in fact. They don't need to know about my credit worthiness. But there's some poor procurement clerk, he's got a software program, this is, he needs my financials, and my R and D response is camping for it.
Yeah, this is, and there's a group called Buying Legal that's basically nothing but legal procurement people that are trying to increase the level of sophistication so that they can be value addies. That's frustrating for, you know, in the legal services market, typically there's three or four really experts, you know, it's just like, I think it's not really a commodity. It's like, if I'm a government, and there's three or four people that really have the expertise to solve my problem, I don't want to frustrate them by a bad procurement experience. And so, that is definitely going on in legal services is trying to create especially a legal procurement. So, I'm going to talk about lagging legal productivity. And I think that this is, that this is an economic thesis that I think captures it. And I have a little picture of the Schubert quartet. And I think that this, this kind of captures it because the person that founded the title of cost disease was William Valment. And he, and he came up with this idea when he studied economics and performing arts. And he basically said, look, 200 years ago, it took, it took three hours to do a Schubert 45 minute quartet. That's still the case 200 years later, and yet the musicians have gotten a pay raise. And so, so you have somebody, you have a group of artisans that have absolutely no productivity gain, and yet they're sharing in the gains of society. And, and, and he makes the point, Valment went on to basically be the founder of this idea of cost disease. And he made the point that medicine, higher ed, just sort of saying governments, legal services are all in this sector that are susceptible to cost disease. And the basic idea would be as computers and clothing and food become cheaper, those productivity gains which, which were driven by the engineers get shared across sectors that don't really have minimal productivity gains because that's the way we kind of keep the, the knowledge workers continuing to do their trade. And so, and so, we have this economic shift that takes place. And so, legal services is definitely amenable to cost disease. And so, we become relatively more expensive. And here's a picture that shows legal services against the CPI. You can see the orange line is legal services. And actually, and so, the cost of legal services going up higher than overall CPI inflation. Tuition is above that, that's the green line. And medical care is the, is the top line. And so, we all need medical care, so we spend more of our income as we get wealthier on medical care. I have a daughter in college and I'm paying a lot of money for her to go and probably more than my parents save for my college education. But legal services is also in that category. But the problematic aspect of this though, unfortunately, is that consumers are reacting to higher legal services by just going without. I can't go without a college education. I can't go without medical care. But I can choose not to hire a lawyer. And that orange line is basically showing that, is I, there's a basket of services in the Consumer Price Index. And the, and I put in more medical care because I need it, but I have to take something out because I'm on a fixed budget. I'm taking out all these services. We're losing wallet share over a period of time. So, it was about 4%, 0.4% legal services in the 1980s is down, down to like 2.25% legal services. And that's very asymmetrically spread. If I get divorced, God forbid, that's going to consume a lot of the, of legal services. And a lot of people don't have the resources to hire an intern. And so, it's a very, very asymmetric.
Is this substitution or is this just a net need?
This is, this is, this is probably, people feel like the amount of money that they can spend for it, they're not getting returns. So, they're, they're, so it's literally, it's latent demand. It's basically foregoing legal services. That's my best thesis.
Suppressed demand.
Yes, suppressed demand. It's like, I, at the point, what I can afford, I can't afford a solution, so I'm going to go with that. I think that that would be the best interpretation of this. So, to kind of wrap this thing up here on this picture, where we're at in the profession is I think that we, up until now, we've dealt with complexity. We're a more complex society. And we've, and we've dealt with this by lawyers becoming specialized. It's very difficult for a lawyer to be a general service lawyer. But I think we're hit a point where we're not only going to be specialized, but we're going to be, we're going to have to collaborate with, with other professionals for data process and technology to rein in this productivity, this lagging productivity problem, which means that the legal profession is, or the legal field is invariably going to become much more multidisciplinary. There's just no way around it. And included in the report was this market map by Thomson Royer, the big publisher. And I looked at it and I, I wouldn't say I got a headache, but, but I'm overwhelmed because there's no way I can understand what all these companies do. And I can understand their business models. But my experience getting to know many of the companies in this space is there's almost invariably some lawyer that realized, oh my God, there's a better way to do this. And they've teamed up with other professionals and they, and they figured out to bootstrap their company or get venture capital. And they're, and they think there's a better way. There's a lot of reasons, I don't have the time to get into them, but there's a lot of reasons that inhibit the ability for law to take a better solution. The biggest reason is, is that so much of our, it's hard to make money through efficiency. If I, if I come over the way to do my work twice as fast, my client still wants me to bill by the hour. And, and, and so, there's so many people in this space that said, this is more efficient. They said, yeah, but, but we're missing business models to transition to this better way of doing things.
The lawyer pays for the technology, but the client gets the benefit.
Absolutely. And in the, and the, I've written about this in a thing called the last mile problem. The way to transition that is you have to have to have a conversation with the, with the value to share. Because I'm going to spend a lot of money on a technology so I can cut my revenues in half. I can't get my partners to pay for the technology. And then, we're stuck in a status quo. So, so I have some empathy for regulators to kind of sort this out because this is a very, very complex landscape, but there's a huge amount of intellectual ferment that's going on right now. And it's an exciting time because that's basically saying we can solve our lagging legal productivity problem. It's a matter of how do we wrap that in to our existing business models? And that will take a generation for us to digest. So, so I have my key points, or I have three key points that I wanted to wrap up with here. And they're, and they're all derivative of what I've already showed you. One is just the breakdown in the people law sector. We've got clients that can't afford legal services. You have lawyers struggling to make a living. And you've got too much pro-state litigation going on in courts. And, and we, as the organized bar and judiciary, have to be responsive to this in some way. But we can clearly say that everything is moving in the wrong direction here and it's a serious problem. And my friend, Gillian Hatfield, who's a professor of law at, at University of Southern Colorado, has made the point that when, when the law doesn't care about the citizens, the citizens don't care about the law. And I fear that we actually have some political ramifications of basically this breakdown in access to the courts, creating cynicism among the public. And I think that this is, this is, I'm being as, as serious as I can be, that this is, this is really where the role of lawyers are to figure out this problem here because our republic depends upon this working properly. And so, this is a serious problem here to deal with. Second thing is, is that although we don't think about this as a self-regulated profession, we don't realize that the ethics rules shape the marketplace. And the ethics rules are laudable from the perspective of they're trying to protect harm from taking place. But there is a second order effect that they do affect. The protection that we provide also actually limits, has some stifling effect on innovation. And I think that we need to look at these ethics rules in terms of are we striking the proper balance? We're getting consumer protection, but it's limiting the ability to unleash some innovation that we need to serve the public interest. And so, those are the rules that I think that probably could be thought about here. And I don't, I'm not recommending in any way that you just change those rules here. I think that this needs to be a deliberate process, but just an open-mindedness that these rules aren't really, they're having a second order effect on how the market is functioning here. And we need to look at this with fresh eyes. Last thing is, is the lag in productivity. And just the point that I want to make that we're headed into a multidisciplinary world where the markets already, the LegalZooms, the world on the people law sector and the, and the market map that I showed you, the technologists see an opportunity here to, to do groundbreaking work. And so, that's our, whether you like it or not, it's going to be more multidisciplinary. And with that, that's my full presentation for you. And I would welcome any questions you might have.
So, let me just kick this off and then invite just key comments and questions. We've been looking at, having, I can, we can view what we've just seen as the economy looking at us. The economy is saying, here's what's going on in the world and here's how you look at us, which is outdated and factual and in some ways irrelevant. I want to flip it and say, let's have us look at the economy. And I think we have, given our current mission, two competing objectives. One is to ensure access to justice by making sure there's enough qualified lawyers and legal services to meet the needs of 40 million Californians while regulating and screening those lawyers to protect clients from harm. And those two goals are at tension with one another. And I view this, this topic as addressing both of those topics because it substitutes technology from lawyers in some settings to enhance access to justice. We need to make sure that there's appropriate protections. And then, there are people who are de facto practicing law in ways that have written the same risk upon that lawyers have, and we need to find a way to address that risk upon them. And then, the third piece that I would bring to this discussion is that we, as an institution, have a need to pay the bills and keep staff doing what they do and fulfill our social mission. And technology is potentially a means by which we can do it. So, when I made that observation, that LegalZoom's desire to maintain their brand by regulating the lawyers who provide services under that brand is in some ways an effective substitute for us. Not a complete substitute, a partial substitute, a way for us to leverage our limited resources. So, I think we can look creatively at how we use technology internally and how technology can be a tool that helps society do what we've been asked to do. And then, the very last thing I would say is the number of lawyers in California who will need to pay us $600 a year is not going to grow immediately. But we still have a 40 million population to serve. And how do we serve them? We might serve them by licensing internet-based legal service providers who will want to go into various marketplaces and say, somebody is assuring the quality of our services. The private sector has created in other settings where there's sort of a rule-free marketplace, some trust-engaging indicia valley. Underwriters Laboratories is a private entity that says, when you plug this radio in, it's not going to burn your house down. The Insurance Services Offices is not quite in any trust violation by the insurance industry, but it regulates insurance products for the benefit of the industry and the insurers. That good housekeeping seal of approval is simply a marketing device for a magazine, but it serves a quasi-regulatory purpose. So, one of the ways that we, as a state-bound institution, dealing with this boundless internet economy, can still provide a useful service, pay our bills and protect customers, is to perhaps say, you go out on the internet and sell legal services all over the planet, and we will allow you to hold yourself out as regulated by the California State Bar for the protection of the consumers of your services. Now, all of these ideas are probably illegal under the current legal constructs and will require collaboration with the court and the legislature and us to achieve it. And some of this will not happen, certainly in my tenure on this board, but in my lifetime. But these are the conversations I think we need to have about this fundamental change in the world we live in. So, with that sort of provocative non-frame, what do my peers have to ask or to say? Randy, please.
For the benefit of those viewing by webcast who started at around noon, I wanted to mention that the State Bar has received two public comments. One from the Center for Public Interest and a written comment only from the Consumers for Responsive Legal System. Both are on the record, on file, available on press from the State Bar. They have a common theme in that they both encourage strong support for the report, Professor Henderson, and should the board proceed to consider the formation of task force? They similarly both endorse that task force and emphasize the need for non-lawyer participation.
And non-lawyer majority in the views of both commentators. Go ahead.
Thank you for this. This has been great. I was wondering if you could address how other jurisdictions, particularly outside of the US, have dealt with some of these issues and how they got past some of these hurdles that are making it so difficult for those in the United States to do it?
So, the, the UK and Australia are two jurisdictions that have gone on this road. I'm told that Canada is probably going to go on this road again, they're two common law jurisdictions. And the, the issue was made, was made a little bit easier because they didn't have a history of kind of a, three branches of government where the, where the judiciary managed, you know, regulated the legal market. And so, they were able to pass national legislation. And it was, it was a mandate that an entity would regulate the legal services market in the public interest. And, and this came about in the early 2000s. There was the Clementi Report in 2004 in the UK that eventually led to the Legal Service Act of 2007 that created a transition period that eventually liberalized the market 2012. And so, they went to a stage and approached a task force that passed legislation that led to a kind of a transition period. And now, you know, it took many years to do. Now, I'm going to be honest with you. I, I, I never thought that this would ever happen in the United States, we have fixed jurisdictions. But then, I, but I thought about it, I said, well, we need a jurisdiction that's big enough and influential enough to look at this issue. And I think that, that there's no jurisdiction in the United States that's looked at this closely. You're the first ones. There's, there's bar officials in a few jurisdictions that know how serious the problem is. And I think that this is great brain power. But California was unique because the State Bar Act of 2017, which, you know, created this separate regulatory body. So, you'd be, you're kind of on par with what, with what happened in the UK. I consider this a kind of like a, you know, a parallel, a similar parallel. I consider this kind of like a parallel, a similar parallel.
Can you put the slide back up, Sarah Wintsey? I think it's two slides back, or Bill? Yeah. I wanted, I was wondering if you could elaborate for the board on what the challenges are, the problems are with our current regulatory environment?
Yes.
The people law space where there's unmet needs that potentially could be filled.
Yeah.
And then the organizational law space.
Yeah.
How these rules are impacting both.
Yeah. The overwhelming issue here, I think the biggest issue here is Rule 5.4, and it's harder to access to capital. I actually think that that's a, I think it boils down to the ability of different professions to co-venture with one another. To get the very best people to do this, we would just say, well, I can go and I can work anywhere. Why should I work in the legal services market when I'm going to create a lot of value and I can't share in the outside? And I think that to get these professionals to work in one organization where they can collaborate and they can create the very best state of the art, there are so many, I'll start with the people law one. LegalZoom is doing the best they can with basically trying to tap into the smart through an insurance entity. They would like the ability to have other technologists in their market, people, their lawyers in a single organization, and they just can't. There's just a firewall between the two of them. In the organizational space, there's companies like United Lex and Elevate. Elevate's here located and based in Los Angeles, by the way. And Axiom, which was founded in Northern California, that are triggered all these workarounds where they have the lawyers that practice over here and service companies, and there's master service agreements, but really what they're trying to do is facilitate cooperation between the two. And the big issue that's going on in an organization like Clocq is the use of the term "non-lawyer." You know, it's like, I'm adding a lot of value and I don't know why I'm a non-lawyer. You know, there's a status issue that's really hindering things. And I think that some of the best alternative service providers, the lawyers are on par with the technologists and the process folks, and they're working together to create, you know, kind of like, I search for an analogy, but if you think about the smartphone and how awesome it is, its capabilities are, they always a team, a multidisciplinary team that built something that was truly spectacular. And we need to kind of create a C bed that allows the lawyers to work with these other professionals to create something miraculous. Is that, I hope I came close to answering your question, Leah.
Yeah, you did.
Well, just giving you an example. A lot of city attorney's time is spent reviewing routine contracts. And you all have precedent, and we have our most junior associate apply the precedent to the client's problem and set a document up for him. We cobble that shoe repeatedly. Clients don't particularly want to pay for that. Using a document engine with a paralegal is the obvious solution.
Yeah.
And I thought, why not monetize 30 years of precedent? And I asked some folks from Silicon Valley to create an existing front end for a document engine for my precedent and go sell this as a service for 250 bucks a month to every local government in California.
Yeah.
And I ran into two hurdles. The market's too small to make any sense because I'm just talking local governments.
Yeah.
So my skill is too narrow.
Yeah.
And I can't attract the attention of the people who can do this well because they've got more lucrative projects.
You almost would have ended up on that market map here. That's a lot of the use cases are similar to that, and I completely agree with that assessment. It's a difficult way, the potential is there, but how do we bring it to fruition? There's obstacles.
Randy.
Yeah, this is a great report. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to the average age of the practicing lawyers in the U.S. and kind of what the trend in that area is? And then also, if you have any ideas on individuals in rural areas or low-income areas utilizing technology more and more, you have to meet through the base group.
The two really good questions. I'm glad that you put your finger on the demographic issue. That's a really serious issue where, I've written about this before, where I see a phenomenon taking place where we have more and more law school graduates. Why in the world would the bar be getting older when we have this endless stream of graduates from more and more law schools? And what is going on is that we actually have a lessened absorption into the licensed bar. They graduate from law school, but they don't become members of the licensed bar primarily because to deal with this productivity issue, why would I train a junior lawyer? How do I monetize training that junior lawyer when I actually know how to do it and I can do it very efficiently because I've done it for years and years and years? And so the bar has gotten older and firms are disproportionately tilted toward partners and fewer and fewer junior associates. I know Amont 200 firms that they'll have 30 associates in the whole place and they'll have 120 partners. And so that's a serious issue, and I worry about law school graduates not, or the legal profession not absorbing the young talent because we haven't figured out a way to monetize their training. And so that's a huge issue. I don't know how to solve it. I just know it's a big issue, and we have a lot of law school graduates that aren't practicing law. On the rural issue, this is akin to what's going on with medical care in rural areas. I would think that it would be a great opportunity for the market to figure out a way to provide legal services in some of the least densely populated parts of the United States. I know that in Indiana, I'll have a firm come, you know, supposedly the job market is bad, but I'll have several parts of our state where none of our students will take a job there. And I think it's a serious issue. I don't know how to solve it, but I have students who would rather not practice law than to live in a rural location. You know, law has become more and more of an urban profession, and I don't know how to solve that problem, but I would think that technology and some capital would be one way to resolve it. And get the courts involved because we have courts that are very underutilized and scattered throughout the counties, you know, and that's a serious issue, they're underutilized.
Maybe we need more TV shows like Law Order Bakersfield.
I find it much easier to recruit from my passing in office than the greater elevation I do from a Gratz Valley office, population 13,000 and a county of 100,000. Here's to it.
What about the unauthorized practice of law? So that's a rule, I think you have that, Rule 5.5, but for Randy as well, how is that implicated in this discussion and the fact that we don't have a definition of the practice of law, as far as I understand it?
Yeah.
We did find the Texas definition as part of the background work for this effort, but maybe you two can speak to that issue as well.
Yeah, and you follow this actually more than I have, so you want to be a crack at that?
Well, let me just mention that the practice of law, unauthorized practice of law doctrine as it's evolved in California has been mostly by common law. And one of the features of it is this notion of corporation practicing law. And that is an intersection of a lot of things, partnerships with non-lawyers, fee sharing, compensation for referrals. They all kind of come together with this concept of corporation practicing law, that no one other than a licensed person is supposed to profit from the practice of law. So as long as there is in California a corporation practicing law, UPL doctrine, I think it is an obstacle, if you want to impose it in that term, to innovation because you don't have, as you say, the financial incentive for non-lawyers to not have an equity or principal interest in new innovative ways of delivering legal services if the actual corporate entity is an unlawful one. The last time the Supreme Court looked at it really was in connection with corporations that are unregistered with the State Bar in a nonprofit context, the Frye versus Tenderloin Housing Clinic situation. And at least in that narrow instance, the Supreme Court said, as long as you don't have any of the evils of the unauthorized practice of law present in a nonprofit corporation that's engaged in practice law activities, it's not going to implicate that doctrine. But there hasn't been any other abrogation of it, to my knowledge. And so we do have a corporation practicing law prohibition in California that, again, if you want to put it in those terms, is an obstacle to innovation.
What I would say is that, and I appreciate your expertise on that, on that. I don't know about unauthorized practice of law, common law doctrine in California at all. But I will say that if you read through the private placement memorandums that have funded a lot of tech startups, they're always worried about being sanctioned for, or approached or targeted for unauthorized practice of law. It's always listed as a risk factor. And I know that some of those innovative people, I know, they said that their biggest worry was someday being said that they're engaging unauthorized practice of law. This is generally speaking, been pleased throughout the country in more of a kind of a people law context, and I think there is some serious harm that can be done by people that are giving legal advice that don't have any formal training. And overwhelmingly, the way this is operated is that there's just ambiguity, ambiguity around the practice of law. We don't define it. You can't do it, but it's never, it's seldom defined because once you define it, then there's a bright line that we can be right up against it. And so as a profession, we've chosen not to define it.
Despite the chilling effect of ambiguity.
Yes, it is. And my understanding is the Texas definition, was that formally passed or was it, it was drafted? The ABA has tried to draft it, but it's not.
No, it was adopted.
What's that?
It is, it's state law.
Yeah, gotcha.
Everything's bigger in Texas.
Well, there actually has a question. Can you follow?
Please.
In that regard, I'm assuming these other jurisdictions that are ahead of us on this stuff have allowed these entities to practice law? And are they regulating, how are they handling this issue of the unauthorized practice of law? Are they regulating?
So in the UK, which I know the best here, they switched to a regime that's, well, it's, the lawyers, they call it restricted, reserved activities, which is the practice of law. So only solicitors and barristers can engage in reserved activities. That still exists, and there's a code of ethics that applies to them. But there's an additional layer of regulation called entity regulation that basically makes the company that Randy was talking about, the company that owns, that has lawyers that are doing reserved activity with technologists and other folks, other professionals, all sharing in the same, you know, corporate enterprise, that enterprise is subject to a compliance regime. And so they have to put forward a plan by which that they can assure to the public and to regulators that they're complying with ethical duties and that the consumer's being protected. And so there's that new layer of entity regulation, it's got a compliance regime that basically holds the organization responsible for breaches. And I think that that's a feasible way of doing it.
There are lots of industries that are regulated that way. Look at the way we regulate insurance. We have very similar objections to the way the insurance companies treat consumers and the way we're going to have lawyers treat consumers, but we don't regulate each insurance agent. We regulate the insurance company. So we're getting close to the hour that we have allotted for this topic. Now it's time to focus on what our action items are for today. And the action item that's recommended to by staff is to, if you believe this topic is worth pursuing, to direct staff to bring back a more focused recommendation for action in September to form a task force to identify its membership, to identify its mission, and to launch the ship. Is there a motion?
Move.
So Alan was the motion. Randy was the second. Alan was the third. Are you with us, Sarah? And Brandon was the second. Is there discussion of the motion? May I ask you to do the roll call?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
So now we get to talk about the simulating topic of health insurance, life insurance. Who's going to comment on that item?
Linda is small again.
So Linda, are you listening? Can you raise my voice?
The lines have been established.
Michael, it's 4:25. Michael has a four clock.
I have a four clock.
Joe, is the line on?
It should be. I have a disconnect.
Somebody just tried to call?
Yes, it's Linda Cap and Mark Cap.
Excellent, you're on. Why don't you go ahead and run it?
Okay, thank you. We presented a data item that explains the status of the affinity life insurance program that the State Bar sponsors. And so I'm just going to give a very high-level overview. So since the 1950s, the bar has sponsored this affinity life insurance program that's available to California licensed attorneys and their families. In November 2016, American General Life advised CoDIP that it intends to stop providing insurance through the affinity program. And so we, the State Bar has been consulting with outside counsel and other experts and talking with both American General and New York Life, which has been identified to take over the life insurance program. So we're working to ensure a smooth transition of the program to New York Life to cause minimal disruption or concern among the current policy holders. In January of this year, American General sent a notice to terminate the group plan policies effective July 1st. We were able to get them to agree to delay the termination until October 31st, which is allowing us time to evaluate what's being proposed and determine the feasibility of New York Life to take over the program. So we're working with outside counsel, industry consultants, and actuaries to analyze the respective rights and obligations of the State Bar and American General, and also to ensure that the agreement that's being proposed with New York Life is appropriate. And so the analysis is ongoing, and we, this is an informational item because we expect the analysis to be completed in time to present a recommendation about whether to adopt that proposal at the September 2018 meeting. So we wanted to, since we're planning to bring that proposal to the meeting in September, we wanted to provide the opportunity for the board to ask questions and get any clarification that's needed.
Effectively, we were the stewards of tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars of insurance resources that provide benefits to attorneys who sought this benefit for them and their families. We have a relationship with a real insurance company to manage the program. They are terminating that relationship. We need to replace that skill set. We've been looking at it for about a part of a year now, and it's likely to come to us for action in September. So this is sort of early warning, get it under radar, and if there are questions, this is a good time to ask them. If there are not, we can receive it before it can move on. So are there any trustees with questions or comments on this item? Joanna, please.
We're, since we're trying to transition out of associational activities, this seems to be one, the reason we're doing this is required by statute.
Linda, is there a statutory mandate that we provide this benefit, or is this something that just comes from our unitary bar history?
It comes from our unitary bar, this treaty, and there's a statutory requirement that we've transitioned the administration of the program. Well, there was an option to transfer the administration of the program to the foundation, which we've done. They're taking over the administration of the programs, and they already have effectively taken that over. In terms of the sponsorship relationship, the foundation can't sponsor the insurance programs under insurance regulations because it's, it can only be offered to members of the sponsored organization. So the foundation doesn't have members, and that's why the bar continues to function as the sponsor of the program. And that's why we're involved in negotiating a new contract to keep the program going. But once this negotiation is done, the day-to-day operations will be administered by the foundation.
So we have effectively a trustee-type role that cannot be transitioned to the California State Bar Foundation because it is a nonprofit organization without members. And the regulatory category that allows insurance programs of this type to exist doesn't, isn't a fit for them. So we are implementing the statutory. Here's an example of a case load clearance. Case load clearance, we know that sometimes it fluctuates above or below 100%, depending on the seasonality or cyclicality of incoming cases, as well as on the resource side, you might have some seasonal fluctuation of eternal resources. All of them impact how much equilibrium we can maintain the case load clearance. Maybe as a start, we can target 10 points within the 100% as performance go to maintain stability in terms of a resource, to be able to keep up with the incoming cases.
And if you look at that chart, you can see the impact that the backlog focus has had on the operation. The low points, every one of them is right after the December effort to close cases that go into the backlog.
Yeah, the current backlog definition certainly creates an artificial cyclicality. Recidivism measure here represents real data examples based on following three types of cases, closed at the pre-filing stage, stipulation dismissal, and ALD.
Remind us what ALD is?
Terminative...
In lieu of...
Basically, two bar gain and margin in our context?
Yeah.
No, it's like conversion to a drug court or something like that.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's not just a drug court, it's not conversion?
Conversion in the sense that it's the first-time offender, so by definition, we see a lot of these cases with just a few complaints, a very short complaint history. And it shows in the recidivism patterns, and also we're presenting two measures for recidivism. The first one is a more loose definition. Whenever there's new complaints, it's plotted, and the way to read is it's incorporating all of the time on the horizontal axis, starting from the lower left corner is point zero, where everyone starts, and moving to the right on the horizontal axis is time after the start of the follow-up. And vertically is the additional cases with the new complaints received. So over time, you see the rise of the recidivism rates at different points of time. And comparing these groups, see a clear difference in the patterns over time. Surprisingly to me, dismissal and stipulation have similar recidivism patterns, and ALD is very low, and even lower when you have a more restrictive definition of recidivating events.
Sean?
Well, I can ask a question just to be sure I understand this perfectly. So looking at the left chart, would appear one conclusion you could draw from that is that the interventional aspect of an agreement in lieu of discipline seems to reduce recidivism?
Or that the types of people who are eligible for such agreements are less likely to recidive to...
The results of the cases as a way of evaluating the impact of different actions taken. So with the three different types, first focus on OCDC performance metrics. You can see the first set of metrics, case load clearance, disposition time, inventory trend, backlog trend, and case prioritization that you have looked at yesterday. And these are mostly related to case processing, case load efficiency measures. Second look users and worker petitions, those are more focused on outcomes. Just a little bit more detail about the what goes behind the first one. Case load clearance rate, you have seen this kind of data presented in the Radwick report, which is simply just the incoming and outgoing cases. But here we're trying to convert that into some kind of rate. The balance of outgoing and incoming cases, if it's in equilibrium, then you would expect 100% over time. When there is a sudden increase in incoming cases, then you begin to see clearance rates falling below 100%. So this is a measure, it's very important to evaluate over time. And actually, the time dimension is true for most of these measures. It's mostly useful when you look at it over time, including backlog, as opposed to the current definition of backlog, which is at the end of the year, it's a snapshot, right?
Which creates perversion fairness?
Yes. And similarly for State Bar Court, you can look at all of these measures falling into categories of a case load related. The first three actually fall into that category. It's clearance, time, on-time case processing, disposition time at median and ninth percentile. And then the last three, they are related to procedural or case outcome metrics. Probation performance metrics, here we're focused on outcome of the cases in terms of successful completion that we will get, proportion of the cases successfully completed probation. Also, drilling down a little bit more about the non-successful completions to see what are the reasons for those failures. And then another measure is to look at satisfaction of restitution orders.
Does it make sense to look at recidivism data with an eye towards recidivism to be in probationers, or does it not make sense?
It does. Here I'm going through the list that's specific to each operational area. Later I'm going to present a couple of the measures that'll apply to mostly, if not all of the components of the system. And those are system-wide measures, that will come later. And proposed LAPA ADP performance metrics, it's similar to probation. It's focused on success, completion, and reasons for termination. Client security fund performance metrics, here it's mostly about case load clearance rate, case load, case inventory, and disposition time.
That seems to admit the metrics that we keep now, which are sort of actuarial. How much money do we have and how much money do we need? I assume we're going to maintain those financial management tools.
Well, this were all something. So I think what we are going to do, and I can't recall if it's in a slide towards the end, once we get input on these metrics, we need to line them up side by side with the current Radwick report as well as the reporting that's going to finance and planning, specifically with respect to CSF. The actuarial data that you're talking about, in my view, is not a performance metric. It's data, information, reporting, it's workload.
Management tools.
It's a financial management tool. So we need to marry them and figure out what is the comprehensive package that we are going to recommend to the board. Because again, I don't want this to just be additive, but it does need to be substantive in part, but we are going to need to provide some basic demographic data about each of these functional areas as well.
I think the idea of starting out with a basic set of performance metrics is similar to the idea of identifying economic indicators, where you can have a pretty good idea of how the economy is going, but then you would certainly need more than 10. And as we begin to use the data, we'll have a better sense of what's the additional information that's needed as context in order to have a better understanding of the meaning of these indicators. So here are two system-wide measures. The first one is recidivism rates. There are two elements in the recidivism measure. One is the time dimension. How long do we follow up on the cases to evaluate the impact? Will it be six months, 12 months, 24, 36 months, following certain decisions or dispositions? And the other mention of recidivism measure is what's considered a recidivating event. And here we're proposing as a start to look at new complaints filed. And then to use a more restricted definition is to look at not only just the new complaints filed, received, but also those complaints that's moved to pre-filing stage. And procedural fairness, there are also two dimensions. One is related to access, the other is fairness. And we use the survey questions in order to construct those two indicators. And system-wide, we'll gather the survey data from OCTC probation and State Bar Court cases. From here, I'll give you a few examples of how these metrics or indicators could be constructed, understood, interpreted, and used. Part of it has to do with, once we become familiar with the metrics and what it means, it actually is more important to begin to use the metrics to set benchmarks or performance standards. Here's an example of a case load clearance. Case load clearance, we know that sometimes it fluctuates above or below 100%, depending on the seasonality or cyclicality of incoming cases, as well as on the resource side, you might have some seasonal fluctuation of eternal resources. All of them impact how much equilibrium we can maintain the case load clearance. Maybe as a start, we can target 10 points within the 100% as performance go to maintain stability in terms of a resource, to be able to keep up with the incoming cases.
And if you look at that chart, you can see the impact that the backlog focus has had on the operation. The low points, every one of them is right after the December effort to close cases that go into backlog.
Yeah, the current backlog definition certainly creates an artificial cyclicality. Recidivism measure here represents real data examples based on following three types of cases, closed at the pre-filing stage, stipulation dismissal, and ALD.
Remind us what ALD is?
Terminative.
In lieu of this.
Basically, two bar in our context?
Yeah.
No, it's like conversion to a drug court or something like that.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's not just drug court, it's not conversion?
Conversion in the sense that it's the first-time offender. So by definition, we see a lot of these cases with just a few complaints, a very short complaint history. And it shows in the recidivism patterns, and also we're presenting two measures for recidivism. The first one is a more loose definition, whenever there's new complaints, it's plotted. And the way to read is it's incorporating all of the time on the horizontal axis, starting from the lower left corner is point zero, where everyone starts, and moving to the right on the horizontal axis, time after the start of the follow-up. Vertically is the additional cases with the new complaints received. So over time, you see the rise of the recidivism rates at different points of time. And comparing these groups, a clear difference in the patterns over time. Surprisingly to me, dismissal and stipulation has similar recidivism patterns, and ALD is very low. And even lower when you have a more restrictive definition of recidivating events.
Sean.
Well, I can ask a question just to be sure I understand this perfectly. So looking at the left chart, it, where here one conclusion you could draw from that is that the interventional aspect of an agreement in lieu of discipline seems to reduce recidivism?
Or that the types of people who are eligible for such agreements are less likely to be to recidivate. These are minor offenders, these are part offenders.
These are all minor offenses. But a dismissal would just be we're closing the case, whereas an agreement in lieu of discipline requires a lawyer to admit a violation, and try to document with the prosecutor's office, and agree that if there's a later violation, then that first violation can be used against him in court, right? And then, well, it could be a basis for discipline, got your understanding?
Well, it could be.
Yeah, they could explain. But what that suggests to me is that's having pretty strong deterrents that the ALDs on future violations.
I wouldn't look at that.
No?
I don't know how you look at it, Ron. What is, I think, surprising and somewhat disturbing is that the recidivism rate for dismissals and stiffs, and on stiffs, one, that they're very similar, and two, that that's approaching 50% at 500 days. So within two years, half of the folks that we have, where we've either dismissed the case, or where we entered into a stipulation, are coming back. That would tell you in a lot of systems that you're not doing something right. So for the ALD population, it's more like 20, you know, slightly under 25%. So it's less than those where we entered into a stipulation or where the case was dismissed, but a 25% recidivism rate is also not.
I'm not.
Yeah, well, understood, but it's a significant difference. So anyway, one thing that would be interesting to me is if we had statistics about that include dispositions by warning letters.
Yes.
And so that's, because it suggests to me if the more, anyway, I could be drawing something too much into this, but it's very interesting.
What I would say in response to Lee's comment, it's slightly more hopeful is that you're only measuring complaints, and some people just live in dangerous neighborhoods. And therefore, this is more likely that it would complain. It's the complaints moved to pre-filing which strike me as the interesting factor, because those are complaints that we think have substance to them. And that is still fairly high. What is it, about 15% after two years? But it's not 50% after two years.
But it's the same stipulations that are higher than dismissal.
Yeah, the fact that there's no difference between stipulations and dismissals is curious.
It is curious to me, but in a lot of times, when you track the patterns of recidivism, whether in our data or in the context of criminal recidivism, the most difficult is to disentangle the fact from, between profile of the subjects being followed and the severity of the sanction. I think to have a better understanding about the complex interaction between these two, we could look at the profile and see controlling for profile in terms of the prior number of complaints and other things, whether we can distinguish the different patterns, to what extent we should be, some of them to the profile and others to just different kinds of sanctions. Actually, that's one of the things we're also working on to create some kind of a risk analysis for probation cases, that will help us down the road to have a better understanding in interpreting recidivism as part of our metrics. Procedure of fairness, here are real examples in the data that we have received initially. We just sent out the letter, and then in the letter, there's link. And a couple of months ago, we began to use a different way of distributing survey, and we sent out emails, and that actually created a higher response rate. We have more data to begin to see what the patterns is like. Here, the questions are divided into two groups. One is related to access, and the other is fairness based on the five-point scale, and then organized in that descending order from the highest, it would close to four points in the evaluation to about three on the fairness side. And to create a composite index between the two sets of the measures, here's a comparison between cases closed at intake and those closed at investigation or pre-filing. You can see clearly the fairness scores, the average score is higher for those closed at investigation and profile than those closed at intake. But the access score is even higher for both, and it's very comparable. There is no statistical difference between the two. To drill down a little bit more, to focus on those that has a strong disagree rating of one, those are limited to the fairness rating. Here, we can use the data to identify actionable items, and you can see the percentage with the highest strong disagree rating is related to communication and whether the explanation in the closing letter is understandable. Next steps, after we begin to produce these metrics and distribute them and have different understanding interpretation, is to evaluate the data and propose standards for setting benchmarks on the ones that have clear directions, we can recognize going, one is positive, going the other is negative. Now, all of them could be used that way, and that's the next step for using the performance metrics. And we'll also identify, as I said earlier, whether there are some additional relevant metrics or other kind of contextual information that would be helpful in using the overall set of performance metrics.
So again, this is an informational item. It's intended to lead to action at our next meeting. But if there are, if folks think we're on the wrong path, now's the time to speak up. If there are questions or comments, we have opportunity for them as well.
How appropriate do you think it is to compare the recidivism metrics from the State Bar to their statewide, the regional averages, or nationwide? Is there any value in us tracking those rates side by side, or should we just be focused on, I'm sure, what's happening inside the State Bar?
I think it would be appropriate, at least at the beginning, to limit the evaluation of the measure strictly within our system. Not only because, a lot of times, what's considered a recidivating event varies from one jurisdiction, from one context to another, but also the data and then the environment affecting the recidivism is very different. As a metric, the purpose is to be able to use the data to give you clear indication about the underlying phenomenon. And for evaluative purpose, we might want to consider data from other contexts or other environments, but for metrics, I think at least initially, we should limit the interpretation and use it only to reflect what's going on in our system.
So Lee and I just had a value-based judgment about the degree of recidivism. He said 50% seems awfully high, 25% is smaller than 50%. We didn't really get much deeper into it than that. And we might well need to look at recidivism rates wherever the data's available, for whatever kinds of adverse human behavior, just to get a sense of, is this higher, is this low? I would hope to see less recidivism among white-collar misdemeanors, or most of what we really want here, than among the kinds of felons that you gave us earlier.
And the other thing that we would hope to see is a variance between those where we had entered into a stipulation after the end of dismissal, because they're a different resource investment of ours. So going back to kind of Bill's discussion about the efficiency, I forgot what his language was, but you know, you want to maximize your resource investment, and we're getting the same outcome whether we dismiss outright or we enter into a stipulation. That tells us that we aren't using our resources very efficiently. So I think we would hope to see some variance between those two, and the goals could be set about bringing the numbers overall down.
Jim?
The last statistic that I had seen from the Department of Corrections was that their rate of recidivism exceeded two-thirds, over 66% of people recidivated.
And if you substitute out the people who died, if one is disabled? Tired. Are there questions or comments from staff on this item? In case you can expect this to come to an agenda near you soon.
Thank you very much.
We have one remaining item on our agenda, and this is item 707. And I think Sean Strauss is going to present by phone, and then Judge Prusell, and one of our colleagues, your name, if it's given to you, Your Honor, will join us. So Sean, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
So take it away, and be aware that you are.
Thank you.
Be aware that you are amputated.
I will try and whisper. Staff is requesting that the Board approve a proposal to bring State Bar Court judges into line with State Bar executives in terms of contributing to health insurance premiums. Right now, the State Bar covers 100% of the cost of health insurance premiums for State Bar Court judges. And we're asking that the Board approve our request to require the State Bar Court judges to begin contributing 20% of costs in line with State Bar executives, as stated in the rules applicable to the State Bar Court judge service. We're also asking that the Board approve a rule change to require that State Bar Court judges begin making the employee portion of their pension contributions on an ongoing basis at the same level as do current State Bar executives. At this particular time, the State Bar covers 100% of costs of pension contributions on behalf of State Bar Court judges, the entirety of both the employer and the employee portion. And we're asking for a rule change that will cause new State Bar Court judges and State Bar Court judges beginning a new term to begin contributing their employee portion of their pension contribution to CalPERS, which at this particular moment, for individuals who became a member of CalPERS before January 1st of 2013, is 7% of salary, and for those who became members of CalPERS after, on or after January 1st of 2013, is 6.5% salary.
Great, is that how you got Sean?
Yeah, the Board item is pretty self-explanatory, I think. If anyone has any questions about any of the arguments that we made, or the statements made in the Board item, I'm happy to answer them, but I believe it covers the substance of the proposal pretty extensively.
Stay tuned, we'll let you know. Welcome Judge Prusell and Judge Hahn.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today to the Board. As many of you know, I'll be on Judge Catherine Prusell, the presiding judge of the State Bar Court. This is my colleague, Judge Hahn, who's also on the appellate division with me. He's been here 15 years, but he served many of those years as a trial judge, so he has experience all throughout the Court. I'm appearing today as spokesperson for the State Bar Court, and also under my duty as presiding judge to represent the State Bar Court in the vegetarian process as authorized by the rules of procedure. I have never appeared before the Board to request any additional compensation or benefits on behalf of the judges, nor do I know of any presiding judge who has ever done so. And I appear today only in response to the staff's request to reduce the judge's pension and health benefits by increasing contributions. Today, I request that on behalf of the State Bar judges, that in your discretion, you make the policy decision to maintain the status quo of these longstanding benefits for two reasons. One, it is a fair overall compensation, and two, is a vitally important tool to recruit and retain highly qualified individuals for judicial positions in order to maintain, what I'll talk about a little bit later, is the excellence of the Court. The State Bar Court staff's request seems to have the goal of making these particular benefits, the health and pension, the same as, or to use their words, align with executive staff or even superior court judges. Viewing just these two benefits against the entire compensation package of either of those two groups really looks at them in a vacuum, I propose. And reducing the judge's health benefit, health and pension benefits will actually not align us with these groups in toto, because considering their entire compensation package. In particular, I believe that the comparative executive staff salaries are negotiated where our salaries are set by statute, and executive salaries are significantly higher than our salaries. Also, State Bar Court judges, I'm sorry, Superior Court judges' retirement system, JRS, that I'm familiar with from having been in Superior Court, and the additional cost of living, whatever they call that, some kind of parity or cost of living pay, depending on what county you live in, is more for the larger counties and lesser, small counties, creates a far more undergraded package. So just when you look at it in total, this does not align us with either of those two groups. It's almost like looking at apples and oranges. It's one portion of a compensation package. And the overall alignment is that our, those benefits would be reduced, and we would not come any closer, in fact, we'd be further away from alignment to either of those groups. So we're talking about a budget or a money issue, and we understand that. The judges understand the Board's pressure, and that cutting expenditures is often necessary in anybody's business or household, my own, anyone's. It's the idea of cutting costs, the cost that you should cut. I had an electric car for three years, and I got a lower utility rate. It was a wonderful cost-cutting measure for myself, but it worked. It was appropriate, it was environmentally correct, and it was great. But maintaining the benefit contributions for judges is, we believe, as State Bar Court judges, a very worthy expenditure. I can tell you anecdotally that all of our judges considered those two particular benefits important in joining the Court. Also, since there are only eight judges, and it seems that that would be the number, it's a smaller group and a small amount, we think, compared to the overall State Bar budget. More importantly, we believe that reducing these longstanding benefits, and to my knowledge, they have been the benefits for all time, to this small group of judges actually conflicts with the goal of recruiting and retaining the best possible judge to do the important work. And I know you know that I believe the work of the State Bar Court is very important. The current judicial compensation package, including these benefits, as they are, has proved to be a very successful recruiting measure, to have what I have been talking about as an excellent Court and an excellent bench. To conclude, I just want you to know and truly understand that we, State Bar Court judges, are public servants foremost, and we have privilege, every one of us, and we know that, to do the important work of the Court. I've been coming before you for a while, talking usually about educational presentations, and I have always emphasized the importance of independent, judicial independence within the Court, for the benefit of everyone, and in particular respondents, and also the excellence of the Court. I may have used the words raising the Court, making the Court a great Court. Today, I cannot emphasize those points enough in my request that you make the policy decision to invest in the ongoing excellence of the Court by maintaining the status quo of the judicial benefits. And that is our request. I thank you very much for your time, and we're here to answer any questions if you have any objection myself.
And I take it Judge Hahn, you didn't have an.
No.
Are there questions for our two esteemed visitors? Thank you. Is there any other input from the public or the audience on this item? In case, let me close the public input portion of the discussion, take it back to staff. Is there a response from staff to what we heard?
Just to say.
There's a note. Oh, yeah, we are, sorry.
Just to say that I, of course, have had several conversations with Judge Prusell about this, and very sympathetic to the courts, the State Bar Court judges' position. I'm just coming at this obviously from a different perspective. And I would say that the primary motivation is not to reduce costs. Certainly, there will be some cost savings outlined in the agenda item, but it is fair to say that with eight positions impacted, this is not going to make or break the State Bar budget. But really, we're talking about something a bit bigger than cost. We're talking about the perception of this organization as one that is not well-managed, and that does not manage its finances well in turn. And this move that we're making today, or we're recommending, asking the Board to make, is part of a continuum of efforts that have been underway for a couple of years now to fix that perception, that misperception of our agency, which has been damaging to us in ways that I don't need to enumerate for you. As we head into the process by which we will be seeing a fee increase and a substantial fee increase to go into effect in 2020, all of you are aware that we will be undergoing an audit by the state auditor, and an additional review by the legislative office. I am trying to put this organization in the best position I can to come out of that project. process with a recommendation from both of those entities in support of the amount of fee increases that we're asking for. And I believe that we simply will not be in a position to do that or to receive that kind of accolade or stamp of approval from those bodies if we continue to have pockets of our organization where we are making financial decisions that cannot be justified and do not frankly make sense. So we made the move, as you know, this year for the first time in state bars' history to begin charging executive staff for their healthcare benefit. That's a decision the board made, made, it went into effect January this year. Executive and confidential staff now paying 20% of their healthcare costs. All, they're all state bar employees, both executive and non, have been making their retirement contributions pursuant to PAPRA. It is only this group of not state bar employees, but state bar affiliated independent constitutional officers who are exempt from the requirement to make their retirement contribution. I do not believe that that can be supported any longer. So that's really where the staff recommendation is coming from in terms of some other, I don't want to be in a position to be rebutting again, that the state bar court judge's salary is higher than all state bar staff, other than those on the leadership team and myself. So I just want to clarify that point about salary. And with that, I think I will stop unless the board has questions for it.
Let me just acknowledge the awkwardness of this moment, especially for those of us who are lawyers. We are trained to treat judges with deference and respect. The independence of our judiciary is a hallmark of our democracy and it makes for the quality of life that we are all privileged to enjoy. And the idea of being in a management position where you have to consider the human elements of compensation and benefits, these judges is uncomfortable and awkward. And so I just want to acknowledge that. I also want to acknowledge that we have deep respect for the two judges who sit before us and for your peers. You are the constitutional officers of a unique institution that does provide a valuable, an excellent service to the people of California. And with that, we nevertheless have to confront your management responsibilities and we nevertheless have to confront, I hesitate to say it, but the optics of making exceptions to management policies at a time when we are trying to engage the legislature and dialogue about the need for more resources for this organization. So having framed the uncomfortable question for the board, is there questions or comments from the trustees or is there a motion?
I just had one question. I heard Judge Purcell say reduce the benefits a couple of times. We aren't reducing the benefits, simply we're asking them to contribute to the cost.
That's right.
Yes, that's correct. I think I said at one point and then later referred to it secondhandly.
And if, if the staff recommendation is approved, the one, the one thing I would point out as a, as a hopeful detail, both for our incumbents and for our recruits, is that what is sometimes called JRS III, which is the combination of the second judicial retirement system, JRS II and PAPRA, has required entering superior court judges to pay 17% of their paychecks towards their pensions. And that is making judicial recruitment difficult, particularly in urban counties. In the urban coastal counties, you cannot get people who've achieved a level of success in a prosecutor's office or a public defense office to take a seat on the bench because they're not only taking a cut in pay, they're trading for a worse pension. That pressure is real and growing and there's ongoing dialogue between the governor and the legislature about addressing it and we will see change. And when we do, I think it creates an opportunity for us to realign our agents with their larger peer group. So I would not, I would not say that this is a forever situation and that there are changes in a dynamic labor marketplace that we should keep on. Other questions or comments from my peers? May I have a motion? Motion from Jim Fox, is there a second? State inspector is the second. Is there discussion? May I substitute the roll call or should we call it all? I'm going to substitute the roll call unless there's a request. The motion passes. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
We are out of business for today, but not out of business in any way or sense. We will see you again for a briefing by telephone, I think most likely on August 18th, and then we will be back here for a two-day meeting in September over which I will chair the hands. Thank you for your assistance today.
Stay tuned. Stay tuned.
Yeah. Thank you. Did you notice how everybody else is jumping? Yes.